This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The minutes from 4/17/24 administrative meeting, the minutes from 4/22/24 commission meetings were received and corrections commissioners, minutes will stand as submitted. Consent agenda. You have the floor there, Director Danielson.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight I have a motion to approve claims paid from March 31st, 2024 through April 19th, 2024, checks numbered 199108 through 199187, 199190 through 199423, and EFTs number 172 through 177 for a grand total of $1,410, 626 and 72 cents. I will make a note that there are two checks, checks missing in the link. Those were used for testing processes with our new MUNIS system and so they were voided out. Any other questions?
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead Commissioner.
I would move to accept consent agenda item A claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Commission proposals. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following our discussion last Wednesday, I would like to make a motion to reconsider a sidewalk variance request for 512 South Raleigh. It was something we heard a couple of months back and at the time, I think there might have been some confusion about the wording of the motion. And so the property owner has requested that we reconsider the variance for the sidewalk, given that there is not currently a road up there. Thanks.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioner, are you asking a question of me? Or is it just my report? Okay, thank you. I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, just a brief reminder that I think there was some interest that Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock, city staff will be meeting with some of the members of the BID concerning parking issues downtown. So, just a reminder. And then Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Brian Oberd up and some of his team to give the commission a report on the CDBG grant recently awarded for the Old Salt Restaurant downtown.
You bet. Brian, you have the floor. Oh, Brian and team.
You don't want to listen to me. Mayor and Commissioners, I'd like to...
You want to, I think you put, no, there you go.
How about that? Mayor and Commissioners, I want to introduce Charmaine Kaminski from my office and Cole Mannix.
Hi. So, we're going to just do a quick little update on the Community Development Block Grant that we did for Cole over at the union. So, Community Development Block Grants are part of the head federal program and it's a grant from the feds to the state and then it turns around in a grant to the city or county, which then comes and we do a loan to local businesses that comes into a revol- as they pay it back, comes into a revolving loan fund. And over the last couple of years, since 2000, we've done 43 loans for just under $3 million. And so this corpus that we're adding with the CBDG funds will take that fund up to 1.25 million total. We have six loans outstanding right now and our total commitment, we have, hold on, I was trying to memorize it, that's what I get. 836 current outstanding with about 23,000 available. So, this will increase that to 1.25. Cole, do you want to talk a little bit about your project and how CBDG funds helped you?
Thank you. This is a tremendous benefit to us, this CDBG loan.
You want to introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Mayor and Commissioner. I represent Old Salt Co-op and this project, the union, and also our meat processing across town, two businesses within Helena. And this will help us with working capital to get on our feet as we operate the union restaurant, which is a butcher shop and wood-fired grill downtown, and also our meat processing across town. And so, bringing on the front of house and back of house staff and, and helping with cost of goods sold, it is a huge benefit to our business and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'll just add a few last notes. Community Development Block Grant Economic Development is in the intent, it's been on the books with HUD for a lot of years. The intent is to provide jobs for those who meet low and moderate income status. So, the intent is to try to keep us to have jobs that are entry level so people have a direction moving forward. The state gets somewhere between 2.5 and 3.5 million dollars. You can get about, was it 25,000 per new job created, up to just over $500,000, which is what we went for with the maximum for Cole and his business. As the principal comes back, we continue to re-lend it out to other businesses within the community. What you need to understand is of our roughly $14 million worth of revolving loan funds, we geofence these types of funds. So, this is a revolving loan fund that is exclusively used for businesses within the city limits of Helena. We have a RLF, a revolving loan fund, that was also funded through these types of funds for Lewis and Clark County as well as Broadwater County. We geofence that, so we're, if we can work through this, we can actually create an opportunity to do gap financing for other businesses within the community. And I do want to give a shout out to Chris and to Ellie within the staff. This thing came together quite quickly between Ellie and Eric Seidensticker in our office, McKenzie up at the Department of Commerce. Took about 45 days once submitted for this to come back with an approval. The last one we did was in Broadwater County. It took a year to get everything done. So, we really appreciate, first of all, the staff that we've been working with and the state of Montana for being able to get this all done. I think that's it. Is that what you wanted, Tim?
Thank you. And Mayor and Commissioners, that concludes my report. Okay. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, HCC three recommendations, public restroom, waste management, HCC priorities representative.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you can see, we passed three recommendations last meeting and with your permission, Mayor, if the authors can give a brief summary of those recommendations and stand for questions?
Please.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Denise Roth Barber and I'm a member of the Helena Citizens Council. I wanted to just highlight the recommendation we made last week on the solid waste management plan that the city has drafted and is currently accepting public comments on. So, to help the City of Helena meet its waste diversion goals of 35% reduced waste by 2030 and 50% by 2040, the HCC supports the following that would appear in the solid waste management plan. Universal stream, single stream curbside collection for the City of Helena. The current proposal before you just says, let's analyze it further. It's been analyzed for years and we already know there's a cost associated with it. We know that there would be significant diversion as a result of single stream curbside recycling. So, we support actually implementing that rather than further analyzing it. We also would support a subscription-based yard waste collection for the City of Helena. And not in the current draft plan, but a recommendation from the HCC is a voluntary pay-as-you-throw program that's modeled after the city of Billings where residents can choose, again, that's, it's very voluntary. You can choose to trade in your very huge 96-gallon garbage can and replace it with a 64-gallon and then your assessment would be $4 a month cheaper. So, we would recommend something that, there's something to be said about, you give somebody 96 gallons, they're going to fill it, you give them 64, they'll fill that. So, but again, it would be voluntary. And also, and this is fairly critical, but the HCC conceptually agrees with the upgrades to the transfer station that are recommended by the Solid Waste Plan Committee, but, but there's no cost that were provided, but the city has those costs. I sat on the Solid Waste Master Plan Committee and if I recall correctly, which, don't quote me on this, but I believe that a new transfer station was going to be 40 million and the upgrades were going to be close to 1/6 of that, so between 6 and 7 million. But I find it very peculiar that it's very detailed how much recycling costs, which it does cost money to recycle, but there's no mention of what it would cost for the transfer station to be upgraded. So, I don't know how the HCC, members of the public, or the commission for that matter, could support something without knowing what is it going to cost and how are we going to pay for it? What is it going to mean to the individual taxpayer? So, we would really appreciate it if even before the commission took a vote on the, the city and counties draft plan, that you ask for the city to provide the costs that could then be put up on Be Heard Helena so that the public is fully informed of what they're asking, being asked to support. We also support the activities where they're going to further analyze the efficiencies of, of the whole solid waste. So, that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Diana Hammer and I'm also on HCC District One. And as Chair Kuiper mentioned, we passed three recommendations. The other two are another recommendation and then some information for you to consider during the budget process. So, I'll be real brief. HCC voted on our priorities. So, as you're moving through the budget process, we are asking that you please keep these in mind as you prioritize the fiscal 25 budget. So, as our high priority, safe routes to schools, bicycle and pedestrian safety, crosswalk and signs, housing affordability, availability, short-term rentals, that sort of thing, sustainability as in waste reduction, water conservation, clean energy and clean energy efficiency, and then land use zoning subdivisions and growth policy. So, those are our top priorities. We also have medium priorities, fire safety awareness, roads, public transportation, trees, urban, we have a good urban forestry program supporting that, and then welcome to Helena signage and wayfinding. And then the second recommendation that we passed at our April 24th meeting was regarding the proposal by the Business Improvement District for a downtown public restroom. We had a presentation from the President of the Business Improvement District, Seth Brandenberger, and this is the recommendation that we made. HCC recognizes the need for an outdoor public restroom downtown and supports the proposal by the Downtown Business Improvement District to install a public restroom such as the Portland Lou in a safe and visible location within Constitution Park. And there's some good background on why we felt this was important. It's a very visible location. It'll help people coming downtown, especially those with little kids or runners or shoppers, find a publicly available restroom that's always open. So, it's, so that motion passed, 18 in favor, just want to oppose. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Representative. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I do have, I have a couple of questions on all three of them. So, I will start with the budget and the restroom while you're up here.
Okay.
And then maybe we can swap. So, I, well, first, I really appreciate the way in which we got the recommendations this time. I think it was helpful to have them in our agenda packet so that we can review before a publicly announced meeting and make comment. So, on the restroom, we, the commission allocated $100,000 to support this project. I guess, is the recommendation from HCC just supportive of that allocation or is there something else beyond this recommendation?
No, we, we only discussed for funding, we only discussed the BID's contribution. We knew that the city had, had some funding in mind, but we didn't weigh in on the funding allocation.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, just maybe an update for HCC that we have allocated 100,000 and I'm going to guess we'll probably have an update from staff sometime soon on where those conversations have gone because I know that they've had some public outreach. And I see Tim shaking his head, yes. So, just a couple of comments on that. And then on the budget priorities, this was super helpful. I know that this was written before we had our last budget meeting where we talked about some of the other general fund expenditures. I'll be anxious to hear HCC's feedback moving forward. From what I had read in the recommendation, it looked like essentially all of the priorities that HCC had ranked were general fund projects with maybe the section of roads and public transportation. We have, the budget that we're reviewing now is a status quo budget. So, essentially the same operations and services that in previous years, however, we haven't included the COLA. And so, I will be anxious to see if HCC has future recommendations or if you feel like our conversations are consistent with where HCC's recommendations were based on our limited funds. We only have about $300,000 of general fund revenue left. If we give a, a cost of living adjustment that I think the full commission was interested in, that wipes that out, so we'll be looking at cash reserves. And I know that we had had conversations about the sidewalk loan program and the renewable energy program. But, I guess, and, and if you can answer this today, totally fine, maybe go back to HCC and come back. But I guess my question would be if, are those general fund expenditure considerations that we're making consistent with the HCC recommendations that you all have presented here?
You know, I'd have to go, I, the HCC didn't discuss that in general and I'm only here really speaking for the HCC, so I don't feel comfortable addressing that whole question. But I think we would be happy to bring it up. We have a special meeting and we are working through the budget process. We have a pretty strong budget team this year preparing specific department recommendations for the fiscal 25 budget. And so, we could loop that into our budget discussion that we have next Monday.
Okay, great. Perfect, that's great. And then I, a couple of questions on the solid waste master plan. And actually, I'm wondering if maybe if there's any staff that might be able to answer the question because I do have a, okay, for some follow-up questions based on that recommendation. Thank you. Last one, Mr. Mayor. That's what happens when there's three recommendations. Hi.
Hello.
So, I was wondering if there would be an opportunity for us when it, the, I guess when we get our next update of the solid waste master plan, because I've not seen the draft since we had our last presentation. But if we could maybe get kind of an evaluation of, of the public comments we're getting on the plan as compared to the HCC recommendations. It looked like some of the, from what I recall, the survey results weren't necessarily, what the HCC is recommending is maybe not consistent with what some of the survey results we received were. And so, I'm just curious to know if we're getting other public comment that says something similar. And, and maybe if we could get some more information based on some of those specific topics that the HCC raised in their recommendation.
Mayor, Commissioner, absolutely. We're currently, the, our consultants put out a, or we held a public meeting and the public comment period is still open. There's a recording of the public meeting on our website and we're seeking comments on the Be Heard Helena page. So, we have this public comment period based on the preliminary findings. They're going to public, at least the current schedule is they'll publish a draft of the integrated solid waste master plan, hopefully in early June, and then we'll have, take additional public comments through June and then there will be a, the final will come out in July. But we can certainly provide an update with that information that you're looking for. And, and yes, you are correct in your statement that some of what was presented here is slightly different than the feedback that we got on our initial survey to the public.
And I guess one final question, is it possible for maybe Public Works to do a presentation for HCC when we do the update? So, the full HCC maybe gets an idea of what's in there and what some of the conversation has been. I know that they don't all obviously watch our meetings, so.
Mayor, Commissioner, absolutely. We'd be happy to, to work that in and answer any questions. I'll, I'll just work with Diana on that, or is...
Great, thanks.
Okay.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Coleman, is the cost of the transfer station upgrade, is that information we have now or is that something we could get?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, that's a little bit more complicated because it is a very significant construction project. And although we deal with recycling every day and the costs of recycling every month and we know the, the commodity prices and the cost of hauling a dumpster from here to there, we need engineering designs, we need engineering estimates. It's a full-on remodel of the, the transfer station. So, will we have ballpark numbers at the, the end of this process? Maybe, but I think they're going to be very round and very rough. But we don't currently have anything that, that's very accurate at this point in time and I don't know if we will, just with how construction product or prices continue to, to go up.
And just briefly, for HCC, I also concur with Commissioner Dean, having the recommendations in writing in advance of the meeting is fantastic. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular items. A, consider a sidewalk variance request for 995 Silverette Street. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a sidewalk variance, as you, as you stated, for 995 Silverette. This is a very unique intersection of two streets. There's both a 80-foot and a 60-foot right-of-way, but the way this lot, and I'll show it to you on the overhead here, is oriented, it only leaves 40 feet for the actual road to go between, along Silverette there. Very, again, odd way that this was left. I think it was a remnant of two subdivisions and two annexations that just kind of, this little corner got left there. So, the property owner is planning to build a three-unit multifamily dwelling on this property and the piece along Knight Street, we're still working with the property owner, but this piece along Silverette, in order to provide enough clearance for emergency vehicles and maintenance vehicles, once that street eventually gets built out with that, only that allowable 40-foot right-of-way, we're recommending the, his request for a curbside sidewalk. There, we, we could have done the one foot off of the property line, but we felt that doing the curbside sidewalk served the property owner better. And then, you know, along with that, we have the...
I'll just go share it on my computer.
Okay. You know, the advantages of, if leaving this as curbside sidewalk, obviously we get the room to build as much of a city standard street as we can when we get to that intersection. As always, curbside sidewalk has its drawbacks, snow plowing in particular, and then separation of the pedestrians from the traffic. But, once this, unless you have questions, we are recommending approval of this variance for this property owner. And as you can see there, the property is in blue and it basically takes up half of the right-of-way there. Both sides, not only the south, but the western approach and the, and the southern approach are offset, very unique intersection. And we're just trying to work with the property owner to do what we can with that area and I think this is the best we can do in the light of what he's intending to build and meeting the requirement of getting sidewalks and main, and trying to keep that connectivity. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments or questions from the Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Shertliff.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Director Knopki, thank you for this. You had mentioned future development when we eventually get to that road. I know there's been a lot of development. That area was annexed in five, six years ago. What is the timeline, you think, for that development for Silverette and Knight?
Mayor and Commissioners, you know, I, I think there's, there's a lot of priorities in, in town, a lot of unimproved streets and it's just going to be a matter of when they, the infill kind of takes over and that'll kind of dictate the improvements along that, along these roadways. If we have spotty infill, then, you know, the improvements may take longer. If it all, you know, comes in at once, then I could see the improvements, you know, coming sooner rather than later.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up.
Please.
With regards to, you know, the play devil's advocate with the curbside sidewalk, will that affect the width? If the streets, let's say Knight or Silverette is built out, will that affect the width of the street towards the adjacent property? Will that cause the road to move further over that way if we, or does the sidewalk affect that at all?
Mayor and Commissioners, the sidewalk will basically remain in where it's being proposed. If at all, it might move towards the property owner's one foot, one or two feet to try to get as much width out of the street as possible. But again, it's just a very unique and weird circumstance that we have as much right-of-way there that they have, we have this small piece that's kind of the block.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Director Knopki, I noticed that there's not a waiver to, waiving the right to protest a future special improvement district with this. Was there, am I missing that or, or was there any thought to including that?
Mayor and Commissioners, there is with the secondary request of the property owner for along Knight because that one has...
Okay.
The, as you can see from along Knight Street there, there's already a vegetated area that's a borrowed ditch basically. And so, we're working with the property owner currently to try to still maintain the drainage but still get the features at least proposed and then work with them to do a deferral until later dates so that when the road gets... until later dates so that when the road gets built out, we can put the improvements where they...
So we don't need to worry about that with this motion here?
It may have been oversight for Silverette, so if you'd like to add that, then I don't think that would be a problem.
I think, given Commissioner Shirtlift's question, I think it prompts, I think it, ensuring that there is a waiving the right to protest a future special improvement district is pretty important if we want to actually get some of these roads completed in the future, because the folks who are developing in that area are the folks that are responsible for that infrastructure, not people currently already living in homes that are developed. So I can include that in my motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a sidewalk placement variance to allow curbside sidewalks along the property line on Silverette frontage of 995 Silverette Street property and to include a waiving the right to protest a future special improvement district.
Second.
And I'm looking at the City Attorney, Mr. Mayor, to make sure I characterize that correctly. Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick comment. I think this is a perfect example of why variances, like where a variance should be considered, an extremely unique circumstance that physically cannot accommodate road safety and the sidewalk. I think that sometimes we get a little confused about the prices, the, or something else should be the reason there's a variance. I think this is a perfect example of why variances exist and when we should utilize them.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider authorization for staff to void stale dated checks. Controller, Treasurer, Director, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have before you again, a request for the Commission to consider authorizing staff to void 14 stale dated checks. They're listed on Exhibit A in your packet. The total amount is $232.57. It is finances practice to look at stale dated checks, and then within the MCA, come to the Commission and request to void them. They do become unclaimed properties, so we do, you know, maintain a list of unclaimed properties so that if someone were to come back and ask for the check, then the, the check would be reissued. This just puts the funds back into the, the bank account, and then should the time ever come where somebody would request reimbursement, then we could do so. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
There's no call-ins on there, eh? Madam Director, I don't have any stale dated checks, right?
I don't see you on the list, Mayor.
Comments from the Commission?
You may want to check the Department of Revenue website for stale, for unclaimed property, if you're interested.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to, I move to authorize staff to void the 14 stale dated checks listed on Exhibit A for a total amount of $232.57.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution to sell a portion of park property. Director Smith, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening.
We're here today for the Commission to consider a resolution to sell a piece of park property. Just as a reminder, we were here a little before Christmas, and the park property sits between two pieces of commercial property owned by Brandon Blank and Holly Matts Blank located at 780 Lola Street and 745 Elaine Street. The park property is unusable and undevelopable. It's a sliver of land between two adjacent commercial properties. And we're here today with a staff recommendation for the Commission to move to approve a resolution authorizing the city to sell a portion of the park property containing 2,808 square feet that is generally located between 780 Lola Street and 745 Elaine Street in Helena, Montana.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Director Smith, assuming this does go through, where do the funds go?
Well, that's an interesting question. It does go into a park fund, and we are working through, this doesn't happen very often, so we were working through the details of how those funds can be allocated within the Parks Department.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution authorizing the city to sell the portion of park property containing 2,808 square feet that is generally located between 780 Lola Street and 745 Elaine Street in Helena, Montana, and more particularly described on the attached deed and shown on the amendment plaque.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider an amendment to the City Code, Section 7-4-2 Alpha for Sidewalk Replacement. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners.
Good evening.
As we had talked about this previously, this is revisions to the City Code, basically to remove the requirement of the one foot from the property line. And this is brought about by the city when adopting the International Fire Code, had a, has a requirement in there of 20 feet of obstructed width. And in order to bring our local street standard into there, we needed two 10-foot lanes. Previously, they were nine-foot lanes, so this increased the right-of-way width to 62 feet. It was requested during some of the public testimony that not to increase this total right-of-way width to, so we lessen the impact on the developers. And so in looking at this, the easiest way to not make that impact is to remove that one-foot offset. As you're well aware, over the past few years with infill development, the City Commission has received a lot of sidewalk variances. City Center stands the Commission's stance on the sidewalks and the desire to have a walkable, connected community to improve accessibility for those who need the sidewalks and ramps. So to help expedite this, we're also recommending or proposing to change the City Commission to City Manager, and the City Manager would be given the authority to approve or deny future sidewalk variances. If a applicant disagreed with the manager's decision, appeals would come before the City So it was also requested during the first passage of this about additional language to be evaluated, to make this more the exception than the rule. And obviously, a variance is already the exception, but we, we're thinking about how sideboards could be, could be assessed. So working with the City Attorney's Office, myself and others worked at looking at what this additional language may look like. And so there's some language that I handed out earlier for the Commission to consider that would follow up in the Section 742, Section 1B. And basically, I'll read part of the section, and then the piece that we're, for your consideration is in parentheses, "Where unusual conditions or strict adherence to this chapter would cause undue or extreme hardship," parentheses, "loss of profit or financial hardship do not by themselves justify a variance," parentheses, and period. That's the language that the Commission could consider. Obviously, if you come up with anything more or to enhance that, or to enhance the, the code as it was revised, we didn't include this into the resolution because depending on what the language and the Commission's consideration of, we didn't want to muddy up the water, so we felt that having the language on the outside of the resolution may help, and then if there was added language, we could do that within the motion. So it's our recommendation to approve second patch, passage of the 742A to require sidewalks be constructed in the right-of-way along the property line and allow the City Manager to adjudicate future sidewalk location variance requests. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Knopki. Just to make sure I'm reading this, that the way it was intended, the sidewalk, or the City Manager may grant a variance to the sidewalk placement location, which to me suggests you're requesting to locate it differently, not to avoid doing it at all. Is that correct? If someone said, "I don't want to do a sidewalk," would that fall under this, or no? What would happen if someone says, "We are requesting not to do a sidewalk"?
Currently, and what is being proposed, is that sidewalks are required. There's no variance for not doing sidewalks. There may be a case for deferrals, or in the case of the previous sidewalk variance where they make sense, we, we would work with the property owner. I'm sure there are going to be some very special circumstances where sidewalks may not just make sense at all, but that's, that's the exception. This is more looking at the general sidewalks will be required in the city. Boulevard is the preferred sidewalk condition, but with this, they could request a curbside sidewalk or something in between from the City Manager, and then if the City Manager approved or denied, they would have the appeal process to come to the City Commission.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up, if I might, that is generally speaking music to my ears, but if someone is requesting not to do it at all, it's a special circumstance, does that go through the City Manager, or would that come to the Commission?
Mayor Commissioner, as the code is being proposed, it would go to the City Manager first, and staff would evaluate and make our recommendations to the City Manager, and the City Manager make that consideration. And then again, if the applicant did not like the outcome, they would have the option to appeal to the Commission.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Mayor Commissioner Reed, just to make sure that it's understood, the code itself right now, the way it's written, is only for a variance for the location, placement, location of the, of the sidewalk. It's not, it doesn't speak to a variance, because as Director Knopki, Knopki mentioned, sidewalks are required. So it doesn't speak to a variance of not placement at all. So it's my opinion, it would have to come before the City Commission if indeed there was a request for no sidewalks at all. There is, as Director Knopki mentioned, a deferral that could be requested, and that would not have to come through the Commission, because it's just putting off when a sidewalk would be put, put in. But in the circumstance, no sidewalks whatsoever for the rest of time, that would have to come before the Commission. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So in the, the, the piece that we had previously approved, especially under 1B, it does not include the language of only where unusual conditions or strict adherence to the chapter or blah, 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 "loss of profit or financial hardship do not by themselves justify a variance." So we could, when we make this motion, it's my preference that we include the, the language that "loss of profit or financial hardship do not by themselves justify a variance." Do we need to read this whole amended language?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, you can just refer to the suggested language passed out to the Commission and in your, in your motion, and we will make sure to include this language, as long as it's clear to what language you are referring, you don't have to read everything.
Okay.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Stand by just a moment, please.
I, I can make it too, if you want. Okay, I'll make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve second passage of an amendment to the City Code, Section 742A, as included in the amended language, to require sidewalks to be constructed in the right-of-way along the property line and not one foot away, or one foot, not one foot away, and allow the City Manager to adjudicate future sidewalk location variance requests. Is that as consistent with the amended language?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shirtlift.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow an industrial light use in B2 zoning district for property located at 1309 Coal Avenue. Director Brink and Oil Planner Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It'll be just one second. It looks like my PowerPoint got closed here.
Never fails. Okay. We should be good. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Computers.
All right, thank you for that brief pause. Tonight, for your consideration, I have a conditional use permit for an industrial light use in a B2 zoning district. This property is legally described as lots 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A in Block 32 of the retracement of lots 1 through 16 in Block 32 of the Flower Garden addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the certificate of survey filed under document number 539135-T. This property is located at 1309 Coal Avenue. This property is generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of North Cook and Coal. The property is currently used by the applicant for research and development, which is a professional offices land use. Some manufacturing work is being done at the property as part of this research and development application. The current professional offices use will continue alongside this new industrial light use. The approval of this permit will allow for more focus to be given to their machining and manufacturing of parts and assembly of components. This requires no alterations to the exterior of the building, and the equipment used is expected to produce minimal impact on neighboring properties. Industrial Light is manufacturer of finished products or parts predominantly from previously prepared materials, including assembly, processing, fabrication, treatment, packaging, storage, sales, and distribution. Typical uses include metal fabrication, which is what this is. The B2 zoning district provides compatible residential uses in broad-range commercial and service uses, and the growth policy designates this area as commercial, with the predominant land use as being the transactions of goods or services. As this is an existing building and developed site, changes to the site will be limited. No... land use has been the transactions of goods or services. As this is an existing building and developed site, changes to the site will be limited. No exterior alterations are planned at this time. The previous uses have the site configured for deliveries and things like that to get them out of the street service. You can see the overhead on the slide here showing their ingress and egress in the general Here is the existing building, looking at it from southeast and from across Cook Street. To the east of the property is the Queen City Estates Building. You can see this in the upper picture. It is about fifty-five feet between the two structures. To the south, it is surrounded by similar commercial kind of warehouse steel structures. This property is at kind of a confluence of zoning districts. Directly to the west, across Cook Street, is a plumbing supply shop that is zone CLM. Across Coal Street to the north is B2-zoned property, and directly across Coal Street from this, on the east side of Cook, is R3 residential zoned. Within that R3 residential zone, there are a couple of multiple dwelling unit properties, fourplexes, and then the Queen City Estates is within the B2 zoning. A half a block north, just on the other side of that residential, is more CLM zoning, and the B2 continues generally to the south and west. Here is the certificate of survey showing the four parcels, or four lots that make up the parcel. The review criteria. A conditional use permit may be granted by the City Commission only upon finding supported by substantial credible evidence in the record the following standards are met. The proposed conditional use as conditioned will not adversely impact public health, safety, or welfare, and the proposed conditional use as conditioned will not adversely impact the peaceful use of existing property or improvements in the vicinity. In considering whether those standards are met, the following factors must be considered: location, character, and natural features of the subject property; type and size of the proposed structure and improvements; historical uses and established use patterns; conformity of the proposed use with the neighborhood plan; current and proposed pedestrian, vehicular, and bicycle traffic; whether the use is consistent with the Helena Climate Change Action Plan; whether the proposal meets zoning dimensional standards; hours of operation, noise, glare, odor, and express public opinion. The above factors are weighted and evaluated. Any one factor may be sufficient to find adverse impacts. The existing commercial building dates to the 90s and is typical of commercial buildings in the area. The 2019 growth policy states that industrial light uses could be compatible with residential, commercial, and other land uses. The adjacent properties, as stated, are a variety of zoning types. The adjacent CLM zoning directly across the street would allow this use by right. It aligns with the growth policy goal of promoting economic vitality. It will not significantly impact current traffic levels. The applicant states there isn't expected twelve employees at the site at any given time. The application stated hours of operation will not extend past normal business hours. Eight to five is what they specified. At the zoning commission meeting, they did say they would like to be able to operate a second shift if possible, just to recoup the economic impact of the equipment they've had to buy. Modern machining equipment is being used. The applicant stated fifty-seven decibels outside the building with machines in use. When I took the photos of the site, I believe I could hear the equipment. It was definitely quieter than hearing someone vacuuming as you walk down the street if they have their windows open, for sure. No conditions were recommended by the reviewing departments. Public hearings were noticed in the independent record. Neighbor notices were sent to property owners within 150 feet for both the zoning commission meeting and this meeting. Notice signs were placed on the Coal Avenue frontage for both meetings. For the zoning commission meeting, three comments have been received, two of which stated no objection. The third had questions about their use of parking and their hours of operation. The zoning commission meeting on April 9th, they approved this 4-2-0 without any added conditions for the recommendation to approve resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow industrial light use in a B2 zoning district for the property legally described before. Are there any questions for city staff at this time?
Thank you, Planner Holland. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Sorry about keeping you from going home. Mayor and Commissioners, Brian Oberth, the Executive Director for Montana Business Assistance Connection, since I didn't give you that the last time. I did want to talk about the economic vitality. This is a business of ours that we're working with, but what you need to understand is Helena is becoming known as a center of excellence when it comes to machining of hard parts. We think the use of advanced manufacturing is a potential leader for us in the Helena area, with the state of Montana being awarded a Headwaters Tech Hub designation that will likely follow with some additional funds, probably in June or July. We think this is an area, as we amplify our ability to machine and produce high-quality parts, is a detractor for us to bring good-paying jobs and, for this body, additional taxable value into our community. This, in combination with Boeing, with Pioneer, with McDantum, with Adipost Boats, we are getting known as an area that you can actually produce high-quality products in the area. So, this is one more company that adds to that allure of being an advanced manufacturing facility and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution granting a conditional use permit to allow an industrial light use in a B2 zoning district for property legally described as lots 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A in Block 32 of the retracement of lots 1 through 16 in Block 32 of the Flower Garden addition to the city of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the certificate of survey filed under document number 539135-T.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any finer comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, really, very quickly, we received this document about parking permits on our, on the dais. Is, when are we looking to discuss this?
We'll be discussing that. There's a meeting going on, you said, Wednesday?
This is for Wednesday?
Mayor, Commissioner, Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock in Room 326.
Thank you.
And maybe just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, these are our current parking fee structure.
Yes.
This is what we currently have.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any finer discussion? Not this meeting is adjourned.